I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll and establish your quorum?
Supervisors Frost.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, June 5th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting is also broadcast live on KUBU Radio on 96.5 FM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. At this time, please silence your electronic devices.
Great, thank you. Please rise and join me in the pledge this morning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I have yet another announcement to make here before the start of our meeting in earnest. In compliance with directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, this meeting is livestreamed and closed to the public. Temporary procedures are subject to change pursuant to guidelines related to social distancing and minimizing person-to-person contact. Members of the public are encouraged to submit public comments electronically. Public comments will be distributed to members of the board and filed in the meeting record. Public comments may be related to a specific agenda item, item number, or for a matter that is not posted on the agenda, referred to as an off-agenda item. This is how members of the public may make a comment for the record. You can email the clerk of the board at boardclerk@saccounty.net, and that's SAC County spelled S-A-C-C-O-U-N-T-Y. Include meeting date and agenda item number. First and last name is optional. You can also go online at bospublicmeetings.saccounty.net, click on "Make a Comment Electronically." Okay, so in light of recent civil unrest here in our community and across the country, there have been some changes in safety protocols. That's why if members of the public are viewing the meeting today, you're seeing less than five of us at the dais. There are two of our board members that are on the phone. It was left at the discretion of board members whether or not to be here in chambers or not. So I just want the public to understand that you do have the full contingent of the board participating in today's hearing. Regarding the recent unrest, just a few comments before we get started. I had a chance to be in downtown Sacramento yesterday morning and joined a number of volunteers to help address the consequence of the night prior, which happened to be a lot of property damage, unfortunately, arson, other violence here in downtown and midtown Sacramento. I know that those are not the only places in the city and county of Sacramento where we had some civil unrest and violence. I do want to thank those that are engaged in peaceful protest. I do believe, having had the opportunity to speak at length with our sheriff, the mayor of Sacramento, and others, that there are elements of what we've seen over the last few days that are not associated with the legitimate protest in light of the tragic murder of George Floyd. And I just wanted to make mention of that. I want to thank the protesters that are understanding that this is their community, this is our community, and that violence is not the way to affect social change. So with that, we will get on with the business of today's meeting. First item, please.
Okay, for your matters, items 1 through 33, you do have one public comment for item 23. For item 4, you are adopting an ordinance amending sections 2.12.010, .020, and .030, Chapter 2.12, Title 2 of the Sacramento County Code relating to the reorganization of the Department of Finance and the Department of Revenue Recovery. You waived reading on this on May 19th. For item 5, you're also adopting an ordinance to amend the Sacramento County Code Sections 2.13.020 and .030 to transfer the duties of the county's Health Information Portability and Accountability Act. Privacy official from the county clerk recorder to the county chief information officer, and designating the chief information officer as the county's HIPAA privacy official and security official. You also waived reading on this on May 19th. And then for item 29, you are acting as the Board of Supervisors and you're adopting an interim ordinance of the county of Sacramento relating to certain utility fee delinquency penalties. And then you're also acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency to adopt an interim urgency ordinance of the Sacramento County Water Agency Code relating to the water use charge delinquency penalties. And that concludes my notes.
Madam Clerk, to the public comment with regard to item 23, is there a specific request that that comment be read into the record? Okay, so let the record show that the written comment will certainly be part of the record. With that, let's go to the phone first. I'll start with Supervisor Frost. Supervisor Frost, do you have any interest in pulling an item from consent for separate discussion or vote?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Supervisor Peters?
Yes, Madam Clerk, I'd like the record to reflect that I'm recusing on item 2 for conflict of interest.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Natoli?
Don't wish to pull the eyes, but I do want to offer some comments. I do have a question on a couple of items, so if we go through those?
Yeah.
Okay. Certainly, I wanted to first call up item 7.
Item 7 is the authority to execute an expenditure contract with the Area 4 agency on aging.
4. It's important. I think people know what we're doing. Thanks.
No problem. For the dine-at-home Sacramento program during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Great, thanks Flo. I want to just thank certainly our staff for their work with Area 4 staff. I know this has taken quite a bit of effort. I think all the effort that's gone in is, obviously doesn't get reflected in the staff report, but I do want to certainly see briefs here in the audience. I know that NAV has been following this very closely as well, Michelle Caíes and her staff. There's Michelle up in the audience. This has taken a lot of work, and I know that the Great Plates Program was instituted by some of the municipalities, you know, at the advent of the announcement. It's taken us a few more weeks here to put this together, but this will have actually, I think, a longer tail to it because it can go through December in the event that the funding holds up. And I know, working with the unincorporated area, but some of the small cities, both restaurateurs, but certainly folks who have been impacted by the stay-at-home order, but also meet the criteria of, I believe, 60 and older and some other factors that go into the consideration. But this is an important effort, and one I think that will, you know, certainly assist both our residents, but also our, some of the restaurateurs in some of the outlined areas, both in the suburbs, but also in the smaller cities, and certainly even in the rural areas where we have a little more isolation, at least distance as it relates to where people may reside. So I wanted just to compliment our staff on this. It's exciting. I know they've been working with each of the supervisor offices to try to identify, I think, some of the potential businesses that could participate, but also, obviously, residents. And Area 4 has been a leader in this. I know all of us, either through our designees and/or ourselves, sit on the Area 4 governing board, and Area 4 has really stepped up with regards to this program, both in this county, but in other counties as well. So just wanted to note that. Again, thank our folks for the good work, so. Okay. And then next, I had just a question, a quick question on item 27.
Item 27, approval of the Omnichewee Hartnell Water District recommended appointments of Michael Whackman as representative, and Mark Wilson and Mark Striders as alternate representatives to the governing board of Sacramento Central Groundwater Authority.
My question is, and it looks like this has been in the works for a bitter time, it looks like the actual submittal may have come forward to the groundwater authority in February based upon action at the Omnichewee's Hartnell Water District. But this appointment is only for 11 weeks and a few days. You know, we go through a lot of effort to bring this forward, and, you know, the clerk has noticed it, and we're going to do this for 11 weeks. Why wouldn't that appointment be for a longer period of time? And if so, maybe we got to streamline the reappointment, assuming we're in agreement with this today?
Yeah. We will definitely do that. I was looking for Michael, but point will take on that.
Okay, because it expires Wednesday, the last Wednesday in August of this year. So I just, I would-
I'm a little bit foggy right now, but you're right. We'll streamline it.
Anyway, again, it may have to come back to us, but I just know a lot of work goes into this, and, you know, hopefully we can streamline that. Okay, and then lastly, and I think you had called the item out, but certainly item 29.
Oh, 29. Oh, yeah, okay. These are the interim urgency ordinances authorizing the director of the water resources and the director of waste management to waive certain county of Sacramento and Sacramento County Water Agency utility and service charge delinquency penalties.
Okay, and this is my comment. Just another thank you certainly to NAV, to Mr. Hartwig, to Mr. Peterson, Mr. Sloan, and all the staff that worked to bring this to us. This does provide a bit of relief to, potential relief to folks who may be impacted, obviously, by loss of employment and/or other hardship during the stay-at-home order and the pandemic. And again, it may be very modest in some respects. It certainly will have an impact, obviously, on, potentially on the budgets of the two departments, but I think it's the right thing to do. And I know that, again, you've been working to put this together, waiting for some guidance from the state, but nonetheless, I think we need to go forward with this. I'm sure, you know, board concurs with that, but thanks for the work that's gone into this, so.
You're welcome.
Great, thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you.
I do have a question on item 23.
On 23, okay. One second. Oh, item 23, authorize the Sacramento County to apply for the local early action planning grants funds.
Great, thank you. Good morning, Leanne.
Good morning.
We have Leanne Loff at our planning director here. So my question is this. I note that I'm supportive of what's before us today, but I wonder, especially as it relates to the accessory dwelling units as part of this, and what the funding could, would be used for, whether or not we risk having very monolithic ADUs, because we're more, the way I understand it from the board letter, is that we'd be using these resources to essentially have off-the-shelf plans that could help expedite approval in the interest of more quickly providing a much needed housing here in Sacramento County. But I read through the board letter under the header for accessory dwelling units, and it seems to me that those plans, if not carefully considered in terms of how, for instance, footprints might be flipped, or elevations might be, we might have a variety of elevations for the same floor plans that are applied. If we don't have those types of things, it seems to me that we might end up with a number of ADUs that look exactly the same and are no more than cookie cutter copies of each other. So can you please address that?
Certainly. We have looked at other jurisdictions, and this has been something that has been, to some degree, successfully implemented in other locations. I understand the comment about particularly the aesthetics. I think where, what does really become a cost for the property owner who wants to build an ADU is doing the kind of engineering design around the wiring and the foundation and the, you know, functional structure of the home. So maybe one thing that we could look at and give you a report back as we move forward to explore implementing this is whether we can get some variety in the aesthetics so that while you may have a, you know, a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom ADU, which I think is what we're going to be looking at, where the structure of the home with regard to its foundation and its, you know, load calculations about the roof and its wiring and electrical are standardized, you end up with different styles so that they don't look exactly the same. So maybe that's something we can explore with this funding.
I would strongly encourage it. I understand that these are likely not to be curbside impressionable units, right? They're probably going to be located at the rear of lots or somewhere besides street-facing. But having worked in the home building industry for a number of years, the common practice, at least in the latter part of the 20th century when I was part of that industry, was to avoid the monotony of architectural articulation, use of materials, colors, those types of things by intentionally having this wide variety of elevations and use of materials as possible. So that's, I think, something that could be applied here as well.
Good talk.
Monsieur Natoli, I noticed that you're, you, you didn't, do you want to speak specifically to this? Because I have another question related to 23.
Okay, finish your, yeah. You raised a point, though. I wanted to touch on that.
Okay, great, thank you. I do have another question related to item 23, Leanne, and then hopefully you can help address. So I also note, too, that what we're being asked to consider today would affect our Housing Trust Fund Nexus Study efforts. And as I made mention, I believe at the beginning of the year when I rotated in this chair, one of the things that I was hoping we could accomplish and address, and I know that the year has taken quite a hard left here, but one of the things I still, I remain very interested in is our non-residential fee structure that contributes to our low-income housing trust fund, and the fact that I'm of the opinion that I believe those fees have been low for years compared to some of other, some of the other local jurisdictions that have addressed their Nexus Studies sooner than ours. I just want to make sure that what we're being asked to do today relative to this is going to work in that same spirit. It's going to expedite our consideration without, you know, trying to make a judgment or a conclusion yet about what the fee ought to be, but I do think it needs to be carefully reviewed, and I would suggest that it probably does have to, need to be increased so that we do have more resources for low-income housing. But I want to make sure that this is part and parcel of that interest.
Definitely. We actually already have the consultant under contract and are expending some amount of funds right now towards that effort. So this grant will allow us to apply additional money in next fiscal year to continue that work in a real best way.
Okay, so you said next fiscal year, beginning July 1, right? Okay, so now I'm looking at the county CEO. I'm hopeful that, I know that we have a lot on our plate right now, but this is, again, remains very important. I would like to see the board have something before it sometime no later than the fall to consider. Is that something that you think we can achieve?
Yeah, because we have the consultant under contract and we are already underway.
Yeah.
We can report back on this specific schedule, but we are underway. We are not waiting for this grant to do this work. One of the benefits of this grant is it does allow you to apply some money to activities that you already were mandated to do and already had ongoing.
And I, you know, I would argue that with recent events, that it's even more pressing that we do everything we can to leave no stone unturned in terms of resources and applying those resources to the provision of low-income housing in our community. So this is, for me, a very high priority matter, I know, for other board members as well. All right. With that, Supervisor Natoli?
Yeah, just thank you for comments, Mr. Chair. And I just, I wanted to go back to the accessory dwelling units and some of the work on, I guess, the off-the-shelf plans that would assist potential applicants in their efforts, maybe reduce some costs. I wanted to ask about, in particular, though, the modular and manufactured units. And a number of years ago, in fact, many years ago, this county obviously adopted, you know, provisions for accessory dwellings and modular units, but also required skirting and some roof elevations and a few other things that would, you know, give them certainly, you know, some aesthetic elements that would, you know, better match, you know, whatever that might be in areas throughout the county, but particularly in more rural areas. And I know we're going to see, and already are seeing proliferation in the rural areas. I think certainly the price of land and the price of properties and the ability for more than one family or set of folks to live on a property is going to open up, and that was the intended legislation. I guess I wanted to ask that, as a part of that, can we take a look at those standards and make sure they comport? Because I think as much as the application in the suburban or more urban setting is important that there be some attention to that particular detail. I think in the rural areas, it may not be as incumbent upon the applicants because of, you know, a variety of housing types, ranch-style, two stories, big, small, new or older. I just think it's important, though, because what I've tended to see, and I think it would be, our permitting would bear this out, that there is a heavy emphasis by the folks in moving the modular units in, meeting the requirements that are currently in the code, but if there are other things that would, I think, provide, you know, a better assimilation and certainly the durability you want for those units, and those are choices that consumers and, you know, and residents would make, but with minimums being the, you know, kind of the threshold that everybody looks to, and you can do more, but not less. I would just ask us to take a look at those things. Again, I don't know if there's any updates, but as relates to some of the roof pitches and things that would, I think, you know, allow for those units to blend in, because they're going to be there for a long time. And I mean, that's the whole idea, is you create this additional housing stock. And I don't have any particular issues that, you know, bring, come to bear here, but I just, as we're looking at updating this, Leanne, I think it would be important, particularly if you're going to kind of offer off-the-shelf, you know, somebody comes in, and it'd probably be for the larger units, I imagine. I haven't seen the smaller units so much, but I would just ask us to maybe throw that into the mix if we're going to spend money and time to do this.
All right. And if that activity doesn't fit neatly into these ADU plans, we may be able to look at that issue in some of the other streamlining that we're looking using the SB 2 Year 1 funds or the infill program. So there may be other subcomponents of this or the other grant where we can look at the manufactured homes.
Okay. Well, again, that's primarily what the ADUs are, though, out in, you know, if they're of any size at all, they're largely that. And so, again, how you would be able to fund it, I just think it makes sense if we're going to update us to take a look at that and make sure we're, you know, going through it, the roster here, because we're going to, you know, this is going to be a part of the landscape for, you know, for a long time to come. So, okay, thanks. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I think, thank you, Leanne. I think that concludes questions and comments for consent items. I would entertain a most, it's been moved by Supervisor Kennedy. Chair will second, and please let the record show that Supervisor Peters is recusing on item 2. With that, we'll do a roll call vote.
Supervisors Frost.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Natoli.
Aye.
Peters.
Aye.
Serna.
Aye.
Unanimous vote, and let the record reflect that Supervisor Peters has recused from item 2 due to a potential conflict of interest.
Great, thank you. Okay, next round, please.
Okay, for item 34, this is a public hearing on the establishment of the Metro Air Park Special Planning Area Development Impact Fee Program. Approve the 2020 supplement to the Public Facilities Master Plan. Approve the 2020 update to the Public Facilities Financing Plan. Approve the Development Impact Fee Program Nexus Study. Approve the Sacramento County Transportation Development Fee Transit Impact Fee Schedule. Introduce an ordinance adding Chapter 16.86 to Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code for the establishment of the development impact fees. Waive full reading of the ordinance and continue to June 16th for adoption. And the environmental determination, no further environmental documentation is required.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Bob Davison, the Division Chief of the County Engineering Division, and I'm happy to be here to help present this item, which is a true milestone for the Metro Park project. I'm going to give a brief history of the Metro Park project up till now, and then Kent Crane of Special Districts is going to do a PowerPoint presentation on the item before you today. So just a little bit of history. This project has been around for a long time. Many county staff, many developers and owners have been working on this back to the early 90s and even before that. I'm going to take it back to the board in 1993 adopted an SPA, a Special Planning Area Ordinance, that allowed Metro Park to develop as a multi-district business park that had industrial, commercial, business, and other uses. It was a very large park. There's more than 1,400 developable acres in the park, and it's located immediately adjacent to the Sacramento International Airport. Also in that ordinance, among many things, was a requirement that a financing plan be approved and its mechanisms be implemented before development occurs in that park. After that, in 1998, a very small Melrose District was formed to form and support planning and design costs for the infrastructure required for the park. In September of 2000, the board took many actions. The board approved a Public Facilities Master Plan, which identified the major infrastructure required and the timing of that infrastructure in order for Metro Park to develop. It also approved a Public Facilities Financing Plan, which mainly recommend, which analyzed the facilities and the timing and recommended a Melrose Community Facilities District and a fee program as the main financing tools that were recommended to be implemented pursuant to the SPA requirements.
Thanks.
And also, at that time, in 2000, the board formed a Melrose Community Facilities District, we'll call it CFD 2000-1, which established special taxes to fund facilities and services in order for the development of Metro Air Park. Now, Metro Park did not develop right away, and the owners, I think one of the, some of the chief issues was value to lien. To issue bonds for Melrose Districts requires value of three times the lien amounts to support the bond issues, and this project just did not have that. So after the 2000 approvals, and before 2004, the Metro Park developers came up with an updated proposal that included bonds that would be privately placed with limited partnerships that, with relationships to owners in the Metro Park development. And the main reason for this was that certain policies and value to lien requirements maybe would not apply in this case. So with that, after that, much happened between 2004 and 2007 and shortly thereafter. In 2004 and '07, the Public Facility Master Plan and Financing Plan were updated. The Master Plan showed that almost $300 million in facilities were required for Metro Park to develop. And in '04 and '07, the board adopted resolutions waiving value to lien requirements and other aspects of county policies so that the bonds could be issued and, as I said, privately placed. Two series of privately placed bonds were approved by the board with a four-fifth vote, a $63.5 million issued in '04 and a $40.2 million issued in '07. And with that, the expectation was that Metro Park would take off and the fee program would be approved within the next few years. And certainly, from '04 and through a few years after '07, about more than, about $90 to $100 million in major backbone infrastructure was put in to the airpark. But then there were several challenges. There was the economic downturn. There was the Natomas Basin Floodplain Moratorium, which was ultimately lifted in 2015. There was a tax delinquency situation, which I'm happy to say today is virtually resolved. And since then, we've been working with Metro Park owners on what is before you today. And with that, unless there's any questions about the history, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Kent Crane. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
I'm safe. Good. Good morning, Kent Crane, Principal Civil Engineer with Special Districts and Economic Development. Number one, I'd like to thank the board's staff.
Kent, before you continue, could you, would you mind raising the podium?
Yeah, sorry.
We've got a couple of supervisors that are attempting to participate from home, and I want to make sure they can hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
I mean, I like the lightbulb joke.
Yeah, 6-4 comes with its consequences.
All right, thank you.
Okay, let me start again. Good morning, Chair. Good morning, board members and those on the phone. Kent Crane, Principal Engineer, Special Districts and Economic Development. One, I just wanted to thank board's staff. They've been very helpful throughout this process. We've expedited all these documents, and the presentation came in this morning at 8:50. So I greatly appreciate staff being accommodating to us in expediting things in a very quick fashion. Moving on. Okay, been a while. How do I advance this? There we go, sorry, I got it. Okay, as Bob mentioned, there- Okay, as Bob mentioned, there were 100 million in CFD 2001 bonds, often called the hard cost bonds. Those are utilized to install the backbone infrastructure, so you could have an industrial and commercial development at the 1,800 metro, 1,800 acre Metro Air Park facility. The major features that were brought in were Metro Air Parkway, north-south infrastructure complete streets, sewer water, drainage, of course, roads. Elkhorn Boulevard, same way, it's your east-west connector. Drainage systems, you can see on the graphic, you can see the pond system. That's an interconnected system of ponds that goes ahead and provides drainage and some treatment. You also have a water system that was brought in. There was no water in this area. It also brought in water from the city of Sacramento that conveys to SCWA. SCWA then took that water, brought it into Metro Air Park. There's tanks, and then also that water, there's some water that goes on to the airport. Also additionally, an SASD and regional sand connector was made. Then 2016, that was my first involvement. I was brought in to help with the Amazon development. It was the first vertical development in Metro Air Park. It was a great project. From that, we learned, was working with the development team from Amazon, and then subsequently others that came in to talk to us about industrial and commercial development in particular, that we have some design challenges and permitting challenges, particularly permitting challenges. At the time, we had a bit higher fees that we imposed upon Amazon, and the development community came back to us going, the development impact fee for the Metro Air Park fee program was high. And if we could do something about that, that would help with its viability and its marketability. Additionally, there were costly infrastructure burdens, especially for initial developers, because just the backbone brought in the basics. But then for each development, you'd have to bring in additional roads, sewer water, and drainage, albeit reimbursable. Sometimes the reimbursements were much off into the future, so there would be what developers' costs call cash flow problems. And then lastly, but probably most importantly, there was no front door. There was no Metro Air Park I-5 interchange, which we'll get into that, how that's being resolved. So from 2016 to today, we work very, very closely, a collective group of the county staff, all the various infrastructure groups, economic development and special districts, with the ownership group, MAPBOA, and it basically entailed frequent meetings throughout over three to four years. And then we also brought in all the various stakeholders, internal and external, to talk about all the infrastructure projects that were in the program and how we could optimize those. The resulting fee program, which is before you today, brings about a 43% reduction in fee rates versus what was proposed in '07. That has been well received by the development community that we work with. Additionally, the initial credit and reimbursement program, IC/RP in the package, brings forward $13.3 million in fee credits and reimbursements. So when developers come in with these early projects, they're able to get a fee credit versus having to pay the fee and then getting reimbursed sometime later. Additionally, if they have infrastructure obligations above and beyond the fee, they can also get a reimbursement for those up to a certain amount at the time of acceptance of the project by the county. We hope this will incentivize vertical development at the park. So this is construction as we have going on today. Number one is Amazon, which is already constructed and has been operational since October 2017. Number two is the North Point, Kansas City's development up on Powerline Road, adjacent to the runway for the Sacramento International Airport. That's a, North Point, Kansas City is building a Walmart there, 1.1 million square feet. Number three up north, on the right of the screen, north is usually up for an engineer, sorry. Number three is the Oats Development on Elverda. It's a 500,000 square foot warehouse. It's a spec warehouse. They are looking to fill that. And then number four is the interchange at Metro Air Parkway. Here are some aerial photos, courtesy of Dean Sukis. He has a drone, and he's been taking some pictures, and they, I think they came out pretty good. You can see the Amazon facility in the left foreground. You can see the new Walmart being constructed by, Walmart Distribution Center being constructed by North Point, further up along Powerline Road. And then in the far right, far off in the distance on the right, you can see a white development. That is the 500,000 square foot Oats Development.
Kent, before you leave that photo.
Sure.
You mentioned that this is a drone shot taken by one of the property owners. Anytime I can see the international airport from a drone shot, I get a little nervous. So, seriously, if there's going to be future drone shots of the property out here, please make sure that everyone's getting the appropriate regulatory ability to do that, given the proximity to the airport.
May I speak to it?
You may.
Yeah. Dean gave me the disclaimer about this drone is controlled by the FAA.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Well, that's what I want to hear.
There you go. But I think you do have a very good point. FAA or not FAA, we got to be careful.
Yeah.
Over projecting. Point well taken.
Agreed. I'll move on to the next slide. This is the interchange. This rightfully should be presented by DOT. They've done a lot of work with this in our inspection group, but I'll go ahead and explain what's going on here. You're looking south at the new interchange, Metro Air Parkway and Interstate 5. You can see the on-ramps and off-ramps. On the south or in the distance, you can see the new bypass road that's been relocated, South Bayou Road. That had a difficult water line relocation in it that's now complete. SCWA was very helpful in that. So you can see that this is progressing along, and hopefully later this year it'll be available. With that, we'll get to the recommended actions. The environmental determination is before you. Also, please open and close the public hearing, and then we're asking you to approve the 2020 supplement to the Public Facilities Master Plan. Approve and update the PFFP. Adopt resolution to approve the fee program and nexus study. Adopt resolution to approve the SCTDSTIF fee schedule. And lastly, introduce ordinance to add fee program to county code and continue for adoption.
Okay, thank you, Kent. I appreciate it. I'll kick things off, and then we'll go to the phones, see if there's questions or comments by Supervisors Frost and Peters. But since this is a project that is in District 1, I'll start things off. First of all, I want to, again, thank everyone in economic development in particular that I believe probably deserves a Nobel Peace Prize in economic development and economics for helping us get to this point. I can tell you, almost 10 years ago, when I was seated to the board, at that time, this was still so upside down in terms of the ability to effectively finance the infrastructure that needs to be funded, to kickstart the development of MAP in earnest. And in light of the Great Recession, it was even compounded that much more in terms of that challenge. It didn't seem like we were going to have progress or see results in terms of creative ways to finance infrastructure anytime soon. And so I know a lot of blood, sweat, and tears went into this, not just by our team, but certainly in cooperation with the property owners who have also been very good to work with, and I think have brought some really creative ways to get us past some of the hurdles in terms of how challenging this project was initially. And on that note, I wanted to make mention of the fact that I've had discussions with Mr. Ramos, who leads the property owner group out here at Metro Air Park. And I know other members of the board recently have probably met or heard from Mr. Ramos and others about the prospect of an enhanced infrastructure finance district. And this is yet another tool that we're not being asked to consider today, but I know that there is a great deal of interest expressed by the property owners in having this be a complimentary tool in the toolbox, ongoing basis for how best to finance critical infrastructure in Metro Air Park. And most importantly, to do it post haste, to do it as fast as we can, take advantage of the fact that we have some momentum, obviously, with the project now. You cited the MAP, Kent, where you pointed out the various parcels that are either developed or under development. I can, you know, I'm hopeful, as I know we all are, that that will continue to happen out there. But I think we ought to really seriously consider the prospect of EIFD and what it could do, not just for the benefit of infrastructure at Metro Air Park, but what it can do to actually accelerate the development of the park, which obviously has implications for enhanced revenue streams for the county. So it's in our best interest, I think, to be exploring what an EIFD could do for the project and for the county. In that respect, I would like to ask our county CEO to work with our economic development team to bring back before this board sometime after summer break, but I would say before, I don't know, October, depending on what else occupies our agenda. But I think it's doable in that timeframe. I'd like to bring back before the board at least an informational item about the merits of an enhanced infrastructure finance district, what it could do for us, and have, certainly have the owners' group participate in that informational item. Leave it up to staff, whether they want to present it as a workshop or how they want to tee it up. I don't think it would be necessarily an action item. It might be a little too soon for that, but I think we should have a very public discussion about, again, what the prospect of an EIFD could do to further enhance the ability to see Metro Air Park succeed. And then, secondly, I wanted to note that we did receive some late correspondence from Nick Abdis, who's of counsel to the Thomas Law Group. He also represents the Greenbrier property owners. And as everyone knows, the Greenbrier property, I forgot what the, I think it's Northlake, is that the new marketing name for Greenbrier? Represents Northlake, which is in the city of Sacramento, more or less immediately east of the project, project that I'm very familiar with, having managed it in a prior life. But I think he makes some very salient, valid points in the letter that he composed and sent to all of us yesterday. He's asking that the understanding of various mitigation measures affecting kind of common interest infrastructure between Metro Air Park and Greenbrier be acknowledged here, confirmed as part of the hearing on the PFFP. So I would like to hear from staff, any response that you'd care to offer relative to the points stressed by Mr. Abdis in his letter of yesterday.
Yes, Supervisor, or Chair Serna, I can go ahead and address that. As far as being committed to at this point in time, it's not really directly related to the actions that the board is being asked to approve today, and none of the actions you're taking would preclude us from continuing to work with the Greenbrier or now Northlake applicant. There are some issues associated with it where this is, Greenbrier would like to address mitigation measures that they have under their environmental document process through their entitlements with the city, as well as potentially conditions of approval. What we would like to do is continue to work with them, and likely the way to deal with that would be some type of memorandum of understanding or memorandum of agreement, because the language that's in the letter isn't exactly where everybody is at this point in time. So we've been working, county staff have been working with the Metro Air Park owners' group, and they were comfortable with committing certain things or committing them in a certain way. And then this language is a little more of a solid commitment, and what we don't want to get to a point is that we've committed to certain projects being taken care of, and the Metro Air Park plan can't build them in the timeline that Greenbrier needs them, and then it might be a commitment of other county dollars to accomplish those projects. So we need to go, there needs to be more definition of what we're talking about as far as the agreement of who's doing what and how that accomplishes mitigations for the two projects.
Fair enough. I think, I think Mr. Abdis is simply asking with this letter that this be made part of the record relative to what we're being asked to consider today. But since you brought it up, in terms of another separate discussion, a different type of instrument that would acknowledge and memorialize some of the issues that are raised by Mr. Abdis, what I would like to know in fairly short order, maybe in the course of the next week or two, I want a schedule. I would like to see a schedule, when a memorandum of understanding could or would be completed so that I, as the supervisor representing this, the district that has this project, understand very clearly, and all parties understand clearly, what the schedule and kind of the course of work would entail to get us to the point where we are addressing some of these, I think, important, valid concerns expressed by Mr. Abdis in his letter about some of these common interest infrastructure. So I don't think that's a heavy lift for you. I think you can probably do that. Is that something that you can agree to, please?
Yeah, we should be able to bring that back at the, by your meeting of the 16th.
Good. Perfect. Thank you. Okay. Let's go to the phones real quick. Supervisor Frost, any questions or comments?
All my questions were answered. Thank you.
Supervisor Peters?
Yes, relative to your last comment, I'd like to know whether what's coming back on June 16th, response to the Abdis letter or the EIFD.
I think what the...
Being on the phone, it's hard to get to the detail.
I think what we can commit to, I think what Mr. Hartwick meant is what the schedule will look like. We'll do it, receive and file so you know, or communication to the board. The broader issue on the EFID, that sometime in the fall, we'll come back to. What we can present to you in an email is what would the schedule look like after discussions with all the different parties, and what can they commit to.
Okay. Thank you. That answered my question.
Thank you. Supervisor Kennedy?
I simply want to echo the Chair's comments and really put the EIFD on a fast track as much as we can. I think this is a great opportunity for the county, and we need to pursue it as quickly as possible.
Great. Thank you. Supervisor Tully?
Yeah, just quickly, just on the EIFD, I think, when that comes back, obviously you have a set of circumstances here that where's largely either commercial or industrial properties versus any residential introduced to it. But I guess as a part of the discussion, since you're going to be bringing it back in a few months or a couple of months, how that might be applied elsewhere, if in fact, we've not used this tool, I guess the city of Sacramento has, and there's been a few jurisdictions throughout the state have used it. I mean, I understand the concept, and it's a, you know, basically, you know, tax increment returns to the property, obviously, advances development, and there are other associated revenues floated to local government that maybe accelerated and or, you know, reached a point much sooner than they would otherwise. But I guess now, as a part of that, just get some understanding, I think about, maybe for example, undeveloped properties there, again, some of those in county ownership still. So I guess I, just as a part of the discussion, you know, how this tool might be used elsewhere, what the pluses are, what the minuses might be as relates to, if you include the residential, impacts to then, you know, individual property owners.
We'll do overall, not project specific, but just introduce the concept. As you mentioned, there's pros and consequences on all these, and we'll present that to you and then have a discussion in the workshop.
And I understand it would be maybe a separate analysis for each circumstance, but I just to get it, you know, because this, again, apparently is, you know, fairly new as relates to one of the tools. I think the concept is one, obviously, that's been used in other, you know, when I think about redevelopment, that's what that was. But now this actually would only take the county's share and then distribute that differently versus the battle that ensued, and obviously, the legislature took that into their consideration in the, you know, a decade ago when they hit away with redevelopment. But, you know, schools and fire agencies and others were concerned about lost TI that was going back into improvements, such as we talk about here today. So, but I'm very interested to learn more about it, and obviously, it has some merit. There's no doubt about that, so.
We will definitely do that.
Mr. CEO, I'd like to respectfully offer in response to your comment just now that it'd be kind of a general workshop. That's fine, if it wants, if you want to present it generally in part about what the merits of EFID are and what they could mean to the county. But I would like to see the presentation and certainly in the express context of Metro Air Park, since that is the context that has been raised here today.
I think I did not mean to infer that we were not going to do that. Part of it, we've got to introduce the concept. I think what the board has heard is from one party, Mr. Ramos. Of course, it would be given a very glowing that that's a great tool to have. We set the stage, give you the pros and cons, and then tell you how that would have an impact, as we typically do with a policy discussion. That was the nature of my comment. That was the nature of my comment.
Okay. All right, thank you. And again, thanks to all of our economic development and public work staff. Troy, thank you to you and your team. All right, so we do have a public hearing. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any written comments provided electronically or otherwise on this item that I haven't already cited?
No, just the two comments that you had already cited.
Okay, very good, thank you. So I'll close the public hearing, bring it back. If there are no further questions or comments by board members, I would like to move staff recommendation.
Second?
It's been moved by the chair, seconded by Supervisor Kennedy. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Frost?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Nativi?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Serna?
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Great, thank you.
Next is item 35, your nominations. You are continuing to July 28th, the Assessment Appeals Board, Children's Coalition, County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Kasunus, County Service Area 4C, Delta, Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, Human Services Coordinating Council, the Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, and the Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council. And today you have three items. You have the Disability Advisory Commission.
Chief is recommending continuing the item until July 28th.
Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Peters?
Please continue to July 40th.
Okay, and then we have the South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. Mr. Kennedy? Okay, so you want to continue to June 16th. Got it. And that concludes your nominations.
Okay, very good.
And then you have your comments from the Office of the County Executive.
Just one comment today. On Friday, the governor did indicate that the counties can start working with his office to get in stage three on the coronavirus. I know with the recent events, that's still an emergency we're under. We're going to continue working with the governor's office on how stage three will look like. There's all kinds of statistics and information we got to present. I just want to let the board know that we are in the process of working, and when we do get some kind of indication, if we're ready for stage three, we'll be back in front of the board getting an attestation. There's still a question about do we have to take that step or not on the attestation, but if we have to, just want to let the board know that we'll bring it to you for your ratification. And same process, have the chair sign the letter and send it to the governor's office. So that's the update on the coronavirus, stage three, if you will.
Okay, very good, thank you. Any members of the board wish to make any closing comments? I see Supervisor Kennedy is in the queue.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I would like to ask the county executive to, through the chair, at your prerogative, to schedule a report back from the sheriff before this board here at the meeting, future date, on what we're doing as a sheriff's department for training of de-escalation tactics, racial sensitivity training, use of force training, and recruitment in communities of If we could have that scheduled, Mr. Chair, at some time in the future, that'd be-
That's excellent recommendation. I support that.
Supervisor Kennedy, I just want to make sure, de-escalation, race relations, use of-
Use of force.
Use of force.
And recruitment in communities of color. Got it, thank you.
Could I add something to that respectfully? Could we also, I know that Supervisor Kennedy has been running point on this, but in terms of any kind of changes, modifications, introduction of new oversight activities, I would like that to be also added to the discussion. I think that's critical. We're all, I think, being rightfully approached by our constituency in light of recent events, and ongoing frustration in the community about what we can and should be doing as a county, so that, I think that should be part of it.
Thank you. And I have a second one. I also, to the CEO, I'd like to look at what our policies are regarding abandonment of alleys in the unincorporated area. I know that, you know, way, 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 way back when I was activist in Oak Park, you know, we actually were able to abandon alleys that were nuisances. And I'm finding that dumping, illegal dumping, and illegal activities going on in alleys in the unincorporated area, in District Two anyway, and I'm sure that probably District One, as much as, and probably District Three as well, is a problem, and how we can look at curing some of that, bro. Got it, thank you.
Also a great point. I know the city of Sacramento has done a considerable amount of that, and-
Under your father.
With some success, so, good, great points, thank you. Supervisor Tully?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple items related to, obviously, impacts of pandemic and stay-at-home orders and so forth. And I want to just preface my comments with, you know, big thank you to all the folks that have worked to accommodate, and I'm going to just talk specifically to our board, we need certainly the chair, working with the flow of the clerk's office and the county exec's office, to continue to have our meetings in an open fashion, you know, we are able to accept public comments via emails. But I would just say that if we're going to continue to be in a situation where either through emergency orders and/or other limitations relative to public gatherings, we're going to need to find a way, and NAV, you know, I've talked about this, I believe, you know, we're not going to be able to do it in time for our budget session two weeks from now, but when we return from break, figure out either we can do Zoom, we can have folks in waiting that can come into the chambers. But, you know, in my view, as well as has worked relative to, you know, being sensitive to that, and again, good thorough distribution of comments, and certainly good work on behalf of clerk's office, and again, all those that have to be accommodated, and I know the chair has been involved in this, I'm feeling much more anxious about the need to, and whether we open the chambers up on a limited fashion, again, accommodate this through some other means, but to allow for real-time commentary beyond emails. And so, again, I think during the recess, it would give us time to plan, if we need to have a budget expenditure, reflects doing something, I mean, I don't know what it's going to take.
I think if I could just sum some of that. Stage three does have the opportunity for opening a lot of things up. So the work we're doing there, I think hopefully will get us opening up some stuff in our chamber. If that's not the case, if we continue going into July and there's a limitation on gatherings, then that's absolutely, we'll look at it. But we're hopeful in stage three that we can get some of the stuff that we need to get open.
Because we've delayed some public hearings on a couple of land use items that I'm familiar with, board members I sure are, because, again, they have interest by number of parties, we've got some-
It wasn't so much because of this, there's some work that wasn't complete either, so I don't want to leave the wrong impression that we did not bring it forward because of that.
This isn't Jackson corridor stuff, so don't, it had no specific reference to that.
No, I understand.
Okay, okay, okay.
No, no, I'm not taking it that way. I want to give you the assurance that when we're ready, we'll bring it to you, just as awkward as this was on the Metro Air Park, we will work with you to bring any items that you want and get the comments. That was the spirit that I was trying to give you.
Oh, I get you.
That we're not holding anything back. When it's ready, and it benefits the county and the districts, we're absolutely bringing those items.
Again, I would just say too, that I think there's, you know, as much as people can convey their feelings, their positions, their concerns, support and/or opposition to items via email, a lot of, you know, information is transmitted these days, there's value, and again, I feel very strongly about this value, to having folks be able to be present, to stand before us, and to engage with us, and to attempt to persuade us at times. And again, we've been limited, and again, certainly taking into account public health concerns, and again, you know, I stand very supportive of that, but I just, I'm feeling more and more compelled to raise the issue here in this forum, but also recognizing that if we aren't able to do that, and I'm hopeful that stage three will allow us to do something in a more limited fashion, but welcome folks back in these chambers, if not, then we've got to do something telephonically or electronically that will allow us to do that, so.
Okay, understood.
Could I put a finer point on that? I mean, I appreciate everything you said, Supervisor Tully, and I agree with it. And you're right, my office has been approached, continues to be approached pretty regularly about concerns over the inability to participate in their own county government, so to speak, by being in chambers and offering in-person oral testimony on important subjects. So I am very eager, just like you and others, to get at least that part of what we do and how we do it, back to a little semblance of normality. But I would like to put a finer point on it by asking, in working with the CEO's office, I'd like to put a letter together, a brief letter, with my signature, hopefully on behalf of the board, entire board, that goes to the administration, the state, expressing our interest in having us achieve the ability to attain that, again, that ability to have people here in chambers and to participate in board hearings on a regular basis. I think that wouldn't necessarily jeopardize anything. In fact, I think it would enhance what's of interest to this county in terms of our relationship with the public, and again, the public's rightful need to and ability to petition their board of supervisors directly on important subject matters. So I'd like to set that in motion, again, work with the CEO's office to get that completed. Supervisor Kennedy?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I apologize for taking so much time, but also, we're, you know, tis the season, we're getting close to 4th of July, so, you know, we're going to get the calls, and if we could get a report, and it doesn't have to be at the board, but just a memo outlining what it is that we're doing for illegal fireworks, that would be appreciated.
Okay, Supervisor Frost, any comments?
I just want to say, I just want to do a shout out to our sheriff deputies for all the hard work that they've done, and all the local law enforcement, to thank them, because they've been out there, I know, working hard, starting early in the afternoon and late into the night with demonstrations, and so I wanted to thank them for their efforts, and so thank the county staff for all their hard work. It's like if we didn't have enough challenges, we just got one more, and everybody just keeps stepping up. So I just wanted to thank everyone for all their hard work and dedication in keeping our community safe. A lot of my constituents are worried, and it's comforting to know that they're on it, they're all over it, and comforting to be able to tell them that. So just wanted to say a special thank you to our law enforcement and to our county staff. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Peters?
No.
Okay, I know Supervisor Tully had one other comment to make.
Yeah, just one other comment, and I've talked to NAV about this, and I trust it's going to be in phase three, but I actually noted in article over the weekend too, that as relates to animal shelters, and the SPCA is going to kind of take a modified approach, and I know NAV has been working with county staff on all county offices, but I hear from people frequently, I've shared that with NAV, and NAV's been working with our director, but to try to accommodate, I think, again, as we've gone through this long period of, you know, semi-isolation and stay-at-homes and so forth, we've maintained that function along with a whole lot of other things. And again, I just, again, very anxious to hear when we can get an opportunity to reopen our shelter to the general public again, so, thanks.
Great, thank you. I have one final comment, but this is probably the most comments we've ever had at the end of the meeting.
Short meeting.
Yeah, right. I just wanted to thank our county council, Lisa Travis, who, in response to some interesting questions that I directed her way last week about the Renter Protection Act that this board approved back in April that went into effect beginning May 1 via ordinance, that essentially has, places a moratorium on evictions for a time-certain duration. She prepared a memo in response to that, that interest of mine, that went to all board members. I did not share the memo itself with the public, but I did certainly get the okay to share the substance of what the memo says with those local and regional housing advocates who have, in recent days, reached out to all board members with substantial amount of emails, expressing their concern that the moratorium was going to, I think, end sooner than they believed. And I know that there's a lot of moving parts to it, and the fact that we had a lot of discussion, and we had resolutions, and we didn't, you know, we had emergency ordinances, and the timing can get a little confusing, but I do appreciate Lisa Travis and her office making clear for the board, and ultimately, housing advocates, what the timing is of the efficacy of the ordinance that this board passed relative to renter protections. And I have taken the liberty, again, of sharing that with those advocacy organizations and individuals, so they're well aware of that. Okay, if there's, oh, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I do. We have received an off-agenda public comment from Martha Esch, and she's asking, why are public audience members being disallowed from being able to see any or all public comments, matters before the county board of supervisors? So just for the record, the public comments are added to the record, and they're published in the record. If you have an off-agenda comment, those comments get published when the action summary goes up. And so for May 19th, we're still compiling that, and so as soon as that happens, her comments will go up.
Great, thank you for that explanation, Madam Clerk. Okay, if there's no further business for the board, we will adjourn to closed session. And there's a separate dial-in number and code for those members of the board that are participating by phone.